Okay, we're gonna call the Joint City Council and Planning Commission to order this evening. Please note that all commissioners and all council members are present. If you'd please stand, I'm gonna ask Mayor Brooktown Burton to lead us in the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh my, your right heart?
My left heart, did I say right?
You said the right heart.
Well, it's your right heart. It's your, the only heart you have is your right heart.
Oh my goodness.
I just wanted to make, I wanted, I wanted to make sure everybody was paying attention to the Burton, is that because, you know?
Don't put it over your left heart, it's your right heart. Okay, this is the time and the place for the general public to address about items that are not on the agenda. Anywhere, anywhere elsewhere, is there anyone in the audience that would like to address the council and commission on an item that is not on the agenda? Okay, seen none, we will move on to our study session. Item number one, review of the public reviewed draft Chino 2024 general plan. This is a joint city council planning commission study session for the 2045 comprehensive general plan update. Our staff report this evening will be provided by your principal planner, Mr. Michael Hitz.
As planning commissioners, so I, before I let Andrew Hill, who's from Diet Batty, who's our consultant, is gonna take the lead on going through the presentation tonight, I just kinda wanted to kinda thank the council and thank the planning commission for their input that they've given to point to this point. It's been about three years since October of 22 that we started this. It's been a long process, we have a lot of community outreach, a lot of engagement with the community. We had our, we have a couple of members of our GPAC, our General Plan Advisory Committee here. And I also wanted too to thank our GP TAC, which kinda consists of, of the directors and various staff members that've kinda dropped everything as we reviewed all these elements the last few weeks and months and years to really get us to this point. So, it's been a really extreme collaborative effort, and I'm very excited to kinda present this to you tonight, get your feedback from you all, and here we go, so Andrew.
Thank you, Mike, and good evening, mayor, council members and commissioners. So if we can have the presentation? There it is, okay. There we are. So, on June 20th, the draft 2045 general plan was released for public review, marking a major milestone in this multi-year citywide effort. The project has been completed in four key phases, which are shown on the screen here, with extensive community engagement. Phase one focused on developing a shared community-wide vision and priorities for the future. Then in phase two, we explored different options for land use, transportation, economic development, and community character with community members, and built consensus around a preferred land use plan and key strategies that was reviewed with the council and the commission last summer. Phase three then involved taking on board the feedback that we received and preparing the draft plan and completing environmental review. Prior to public release, the draft plan was reviewed by city staff from all departments and also by our General Plan Advisory Committee, as, as Mike mentioned, who were integral for making, in making sure that it reflects Chino's priorities. And so now we're in phase four, which involves public review of the draft to be followed by formal adoption hearings later this summer. And so today, we're really proud to introduce the draft 2045 general plan to you. And the objectives of our study session will be to provide an overview of key content and to allow an opportunity for questions and comments ahead of formal adoption hearings that'll be in August and September. No action is being taken tonight, but we will record your comments and reflect them in the hearing drafts of the general plan, together with any other feedback we get from the community. And so, in my presentation tonight, I'm gonna cover a little background, recap our process, community engagement, and, and provide an overview of the organization of the plan. And then I'll do a walkthrough of each element, one by one, providing a little overview of the key content. And that's all to set up for your discussion and your feedback. So, the general plan is of course Chino's blueprint for development and conservation. It describes the community's vision for the future, and it sets out a set of policies and actions to move that vision forward. Under state law, all California cities are required to adopt a general plan that applies to land within the city limit and also within the sphere of influence or the land that's adjacent to the city that could potentially be annexed in the future. So, Chino's planning area, including the city limit and the sphere of influence, is shown on the map at right. City decision makers will use the general plan when reviewing proposed projects or when making decisions about investments of public funds. City staff from all departments will use the plan when formulating their annual work plans and departmental budgets. And property owners and developers will also refer to the plan when, when they're planning out proposed development projects. Chino's general plan, the existing one, was adopted about 15 years ago, but times have changed considerably since then. The general plan is being updated now to address new state laws that have come into force over the last 15 years, as well as emerging issues. So, key objectives for the project include preserving and enhancing local heritage and small-town character, growing the local economy in ways that improve quality of life for residents, modernizing the transportation system and improving options for getting around town, and establishing a framework for a sustainable, healthy, and resilient community. Community engagement was really a fundamental part of the general plan update process, and overall, more than 2,350 people have participated in a variety of different ways as the draft plan was being developed. So, we did pop-up outreach to engaging with community members at events around town. We did small group meetings with property owners, developers, community groups, and other key stakeholders. We held two community open house events that were attended by over 250 residents. And we did two citywide online surveys, and as well as engaging with a public polling firm, FM3, to do a statistically valid survey of Chino voters to gauge public support for some of the key ideas that are contained in the plan. And then additionally, our General Plan Advisory Committee, made up of local residents, met nine times to review key content and ensure that it's in line with Chino priorities. There we are. So, a key outcome of phase one was the vision and guiding principles that described the kind of community that Chino residents and businesses would like to see in the future. It's organized around three key themes, people, places, and patterns. And it includes principles for preserving and enhancing Chino's small-town feel and high quality of community services, fostering a balanced community, a memorable city, a vibrant downtown, and revitalized commercial centers, and promoting a healthy, connected city, as well as successful local businesses and respect for the past. These guiding principles are incorporated as the, as the key goals of the plan, so you'll see them in all elements. The, the plan itself is organized into eight chapters that correspond to the legal requirements for the general plan, but also to Chino's priorities. The current general plan has 14 chapters, but we've combined them and, in ways that better reflect city operations. So, for example, we now have an infrastructure element that addresses roadways and utilities, providing one location for all the priorities of the Public Works Department. The housing element is gonna be, is published under a separate cover, recognizing that it has its own unique set of legal requirements, including that it be updated on a more frequent timeframe than, than the rest of the general plan. The, within each element, the general plan includes narrative, narrative text, maps, photos, and diagrams. But the structure of the element is built around goals, policies, and implementing actions. The goals describe desired outcomes or conditions, and as I said, they mirror the language of the guiding principles, so the plan really reflects community priorities. Policies are things that the, that the city will do on an ongoing basis to implement the goals as development projects are reviewed and as decisions are made on investing public funds. And the actions also implement the goals, but the actions are typically things that are done once and crossed off a list. So, for example, it might be adopt a specific plan, or update the zoning code, or establish a program to achieve a particular end. So, let me move on now with an overview of, of the key content, element by element. And I'm gonna start with the land use and community character element. So, this element addresses legal requirements for land use, but also some key priorities of importance to Chino, so community character and historic preservation among them. It is organized around eight key goals, and it, those goals are supported by 98 policies and 52 actions. So, it's a very robust element. The key goals are listed in the center there, balanced community, vibrant downtown, revitalized commercial centers, attractive corridors and gateways, healthy, thriving neighborhoods, strong employment districts, ties to the past, and distinctive sense of place. Some of the key moves in the key strategies in this element include a robust suite of policies for responsible growth management, thinking about orderly planning for any future annexations in the sphere of influence, a strategy for creating a vibrant downtown that can really serve as a gathering place for the community and a center of community life, actions to promote mixed-use development in select key areas of Chino, actions to address neighborhood parking pressures, the idea of pursuing an agritopia community, and incorporating a heritage theme into the design of places. So, buildout of the general plan is projected to result in about 9,700 new homes and almost 9,000 new jobs by 2045. This is consistent with the housing element and also with regional projections for Chino. The general plan seeks to focus that new growth primarily in the key opportunity areas that are shown on this map at the right of the screen. These are areas with vacant or underutilized land that can accommodate development. And outside of these areas, the general plan seeks to preserve and enhance existing neighborhood character. So, for example, in the preserved specific plan, there's significant development capacity remaining, and so the 2045 general plan supports continued implementation of that specific plan. In the center, in, in the existing employment districts, the, there's considerable underutilized land that can, that could be redeveloped for, for new employment generating uses, and so the plan seeks to, to, to focus new industrial and manufacturing growth there. And then outside those areas, there's also capacity for redevelopment in some of Chino's older shopping centers. And so, you can see those in the orange and, and dark brown colors. Those are, those were an important focus of community outreach, and four new land use designations were drafted to represent the community's shared vision for those areas. So, the first of those designations is a new downtown designation, and it was developed to foster a distinct district at the heart of Chino to serve as a focal point for civic, cultural, and community life. It provides for a vibrant mix of, of business, entertainment, residential, and cultural use, cultural and civic uses. Community outreach indicated a strong support for this concept, and the statistical survey found that 75% of respondents were in favor of moving forward with this downtown concept. A measure M vote would be needed to implement it, and the general plan provides a framework and a strategy for making that happen. The regional mixed-use designation is intended to facilitate the evolution of the city's regional shopping centers to support existing businesses in those locations and to position Chino as a regional destination for festivals, cultural, and sporting events. The city has already applied the mixed-use overlay and the affordable housing overlay to certain sites in those regional malls, and the general plan, the 2045 general plan doesn't add any new sites or, or change any of that. It simply seeks to promote mixed-use development around those, around those sites. So, the plan does establish incentives for property owners to provide amenities within the regional shopping centers, such as outdoor dining, mini parks, plazas, seating areas, and family-friendly facilities, also EV fast-charging stations, entertainment programming, and public art, to really make these vibrant destinations that will draw people not only from Chino, but from around the wider region as well. This concept was also solidly supported in community outreach and in the statistical survey, as you can see by the numbers on the screen. The third designation is the, new designation is the Boulevard Mixed Use Designation that would apply along segments of Riverside, just north of downtown, and Central Avenue, south of the 60 freeway. It's intended to promote redevelopment of underutilized properties along those key commercial corridors in the central part of the city to foster attractive, human-scaled mixed-use development that contributes to local character and enhances small-town sense of place. It's designed to promote a vibrant, to promote vibrant mixed-use places, and it contains incentives for lot consolidation and also the provision of, of those amenities that can really activate the places like outdoor dining, mini parks, plazas, public art, programming. This concept also, as you can see, receives strong community support with 80% of respondents to the statistical survey indicating they were in favor. And then the fourth new designation is the Employment Mixed Use Designation that would apply to a property in the south of the city at Euclid and Bickmore. That property has remained vacant for over 20 years. It was originally intended for commercial retail development as part of the preserved specific plan, but developing retail in the current climate faces significant financial feasibility challenges in today's era of internet shopping and, and e-commerce. And so, this designation was intended to leverage market demand for light industrial and manufacturing spaces in the region and to capitalize on the site's location on a major regional thoroughfare and realize the vision for retail in the south of the city. The designation allows for a mix of commercial retail services, light industrial, and manufacturing on the site. 100% retail and commercial projects are permitted, or if light industrial and manufacturing uses are proposed, a minimum of 75,000 square feet of retail must be provided on the site, and it must front the Euclid Avenue frontage. There's a development in Eastvale that, it's called the Merge, and it can be a model for what this site could look like. It has retail, a retail center right along the, the main frontage road with light industrial buildings behind it. Architecture, and those buildings have architectural design to match the retail component and, and look attractive. There was strong support for this concept as well in the community, with nearly 70% of the respondents to the statistical survey indicating they were in favor of it. This slide shows the current general plan land use map on the left of the screen and the proposed general plan land use map on the right side. As you can see, they're substantially similar. The key difference is that we've incorporated those four new land use designations, and we've split out the, the base land use designations and put the overlays on a second map, so you can see them more easily. Those overlays are the mixed-use overlay, the affordable housing overlay, an airport overlay that would apply over the airport, and the urban reserve overlay that applies to state-owned land at CIM and CIW. This slide shows the, shows areas where parcels receiving a new general plan land use designation, just for clarity. As you can see, we've added those four new designations. Those are shown on the, on the left side. And outside of those areas, the general plan land use map is predominantly the same as the current. However, there are some targeted changes that are being proposed. Those are made to better align land use on those sites with the surrounding parcels or to better reflect the development potential. But generally, you can see that clearly the, outside of the opportunities, the general plan land use is largely staying the same. Additionally, the, the, overall, the general plan land use map is meant to foster vibrant mixed-use centers and corridors, which are shown in the, in the red and the orange, focus industrial and manufacturing uses within those established employment districts, right in the middle, and, and then to preserve and enhance neighborhood character in, in established residential areas. The land use element also introduces policies to encourage design of places that reflect Chino's history and its agricultural heritage, and it includes an implementing action to pursue the creation of an agritopia community that could feature a heritage museum with a working farm, a training facility dedicated to sustainable agricultural practices, a farm-to-table restaurant, an event space, and other potential commercial opportunities, as well as a range of new homes for young families. So, next, the economic development element. This, this element is an optional element, not required under state law, but it is a priority for Chino. It's organized around six goals, and it's supported by 39 policies and 23 implementing actions. The goals, again, are shown in the center, create a business-friendly community, a positive city image, build, build business attraction and retention, promote community-first economic development, a focus on workforce skills aligned with business needs and fiscal responsibility. Some of the key strategies included in this element include a policy framework for a coordinated cross-departmental approach to, to economic development, periodically benchmarking Chino against peer communities to make sure that fees are appropriate, incentives offered are, are in line with other communities, and, and to generally check the strategy. Also, there's an action to create a brand identity for Chino, as well as a standalone economic development website that can serve as a one-stop portal for, for businesses potentially interested in investing in the city, to focus on small business support programs and to establish a property acquisition fund and to launch a regular economic development bulletin. The next element is the infrastructure element. This one focuses on state requirements for, for circulation, including roadway circulation, transportation, but also utility infrastructure, so water, sewer, and public stormwater. This element is structured around six goals, and it's got 86 supporting policies and 40 implementing actions. Again, the key goals are shown in the center, strengthen regional connectivity, create a comprehensive transportation system, focus on efficient circulation, promote a connected city, safe, safe and efficient goods movement, and reliable utility service, services. Some of the key actions here focus on supporting completion of the Pine Avenue Connector and other regional connectivity improvements, updating the bicycle and pedestrian master plan, studying the potential for new technologies to optimize parking at Ayala Park, create online truck route maps, and investigate the potential for new materials for roadways that can reduce maintenance costs, and also study different infrastructure financing strategies. A key part of the, of the infrastructure element in, in includes a, is, is the circulation diagram. And the current circulation diagram is shown on the, on the left side of the screen with the proposed on the right side of the screen. The 2040, the 2045 circulation diagram is really substantially The 2045 circulation diagram is really substantially similar to the current diagram, but there are a couple of key changes. In the 2025 general plan envisioned that roadway widening would be needed to accommodate future traffic. And it required that future projects would dedicate right-of-way for that purpose. Even with significant growth in Chino over the last 15 years, that roadway widening has not become necessary. And in the traffic modeling indicates that in the future, even with full build-out of the general plan in 2045, there's the six roadway segments that were originally planned for widening. Well, that modeling indicates that the widening will not be needed. And those right-of-way dedications won't need to be made. And so those segments are Central Avenue from El Prado to Riverside, Riverside from Pipeline to Euclid, Chino Avenue from the West City Limit to East End Avenue, Chino Avenue from Monte Vista to Benson, and Schaefer from Central to Benson, and the last one being Benson Avenue from Francis to the 60 freeway. So those segments which were in the 2025 general plan planned for widening will not be widened now. And then additionally, the circulation diagram incorporates and the element incorporates new street classifications, two of them. There's a downtown street typology with angled street parking that could apply in the downtown area or also on Main Street in the Preserve, for example. And then additionally, a rural roadway designation that could apply for streets in the sphere of influence in the north in the event that they're annexed into the city in the future. The 2025 general plan includes an outdated truck route map. And so the 2045 general plan replaces that with the current adopted truck route map with a couple of adjustments. First, in the northwest of the city, the proposed truck route map shows the truck route along Philadelphia in the northwest that was added with the recent annexation of that area into the city. And then second, it removes truck routes along Quality Way in the Preserve. And Public Works feels that those are not needed. The infrastructure element also addresses bicycle circulation and safety. Strengthening north-south connections is a priority for Chino. And the current Bicycle and Pedestrian Master Plan does a good job of locating bicycle routes on parallel streets in order to reduce the potential for collisions. However, given the existing development pattern in Chino and the importance of those north-south connections, there are inevitably some locations where streets will need to accommodate both trucks and bicycles. And so the general plan identifies those locations as well as some improvements or strategies that can be used to reduce conflicts and improve safety. These strategies will be studied as part of a future update to the Bicycle and Pedestrian Master Plan. And that effort will also involve identifying the high-injury network and with additional policies to focus on improving roadway safety throughout Chino. And then additionally, the element also addresses utility priorities. So public water, sewer, and stormwater infrastructure. Policies call for the consideration of climate impacts on infrastructure needs and for the expanded use of technology to ensure efficient delivery of services. Next, the Parks, Recreation, and Community Services element. This element is organized around four goals. It has 42 supporting policies and 21 actions. And the key goals shown in the middle are a comprehensive parks and trails system, making Ayala Park a regional recreational destination that draws people from throughout Chino but also from the region, focusing on facilities and services that have positive impact in the community, and continuing to provide responsive police and fire services. Some of the key strategies incorporated into this element include exploring creative ways to provide more parkland, particularly in the northern part of the city. So that could involve converting, closing off some alleyways such as along Riverside to create mini parks, focusing on publicly accessible but privately owned park space in some of the shopping centers, and expanding shared-use agreements with the Chino Valley Unified School District or even with J.P. College. There's also a suite of policies aimed at positioning Ayala Park as a regional recreational destination. There's guidance for sharing data on new developments with the Chino Valley Unified School District and coordinating with them regularly to make sure that there's adequate planning for new school facilities to keep up with the growth projected in Chino. And then again, exploring new technologies that can be used to improve public safety and create efficient delivery of services. And so Chino has adopted a standard of providing three acres of parkland for every thousand residents in the city. And currently, today, we're a little below that threshold. We've got 2.85 acres per thousand residents. However, there are 107 acres of new parkland planned. And so once those parks get built and considering the projected population in 2045, the city will likely be over the standard. So we'll be providing 3.32 acres per thousand residents. I mentioned that making Ayala Park a regional and local draw is an important priority. And so there's a suite of policies in this element aimed at that. So some of those include supporting the development of food and beverage in and around the park as well as hospitality, pursuing the redevelopment of the former driving range at Ayala Park, perhaps with a container park or with a water park, and improving parking management strategies at Ayala Park, perhaps using technology to achieve that. And then, so I said the amount of park space is projected to be adequate, in fact, exceeding the standard in 2045. But access to parks is also important. This map is showing that most residential areas in Chino do have walking access to a park within 10 minutes of home, but there are some gaps. And so this element includes some ideas to help close those gaps and provide more park space, particularly as you can see in the northern part of the city. So that would involve potentially creating mini parks and open spaces within the shopping centers. And so as I mentioned, in the land use element, we have incentives for developers to provide those kind of spaces that can help meet the need in the future. Also, as I mentioned, looking at perhaps closing off some alleyways along Riverside and creating pocket mini parks and public spaces. And so that's a strategy, expanding the use of shared-use agreements with Chino Valley Unified School District and also potentially with J.P. College to provide more access in the neighborhoods for residents. And also focus on design and programming that can encourage greater use of existing parks. Right. And then the next element is the hazards, safety, and noise element. This element addresses several different legal requirements for the general plan, particularly around natural and human-made hazards and community resilience and safety, as well as noise. It's organized around four goals and it has 56 supporting policies and 29 actions. The goals are hazard protection, creating a resilient community, promoting effective emergency response, and promoting airport safety. Some of the key strategies included in this element include a program to assess the earthquake risk and to facilitate upgrades of at-risk buildings, prioritizing CIP projects to address roadway flooding in certain areas where repetitive loss has been noted, and then requiring a fire protection plan for development in fire hazard severity zones. And I'll explain that more a little bit on the next slide. And then robust policies for community emergency preparedness, increasing emergency evacuation strategies, and then updating the airport land use plan to address noise and safety hazards. And so the maps in the element have been comprehensively updated with the latest data. This includes new data on fire hazard severity zones, which is the map on the right of the screen. CAL FIRE introduced and released new fire hazard severity maps statewide in the spring of this year. And so that's what's being shown here. With that new data, there are now areas of Chino in the south and the Preserve that have high and very high fire hazard severity zones. And so to address this risk, we've added a new suite of policies that require proactive weed abatement in those areas, the preparation of a wildfire protection plan for new residential developments, and the use of fire-resistant building materials and design techniques. All of these policies were developed in consultation with Chino Valley Fire and also with staff from CAL FIRE, so it really reflects best practices. Another new requirement for the safety element is that emergency evacuation capacity be evaluated under different strategies and scenarios and policies be incorporated to facilitate efficient evacuation. So we looked at several different evacuation strategies, including evacuation scenarios to the north and to the east in the event of flooding or fire in the south, and the evacuation to the east in the event of San Antonio Dam inundation or perhaps an earthquake. The policies really focus on facilitating efficient evacuation with the use of technology and with roadway design techniques. But most importantly, though, there's a strong focus on building community awareness and preparedness for natural disasters and emergencies events. Under state law, the element needs to be reviewed by CAL FIRE. And so we've been working with staff at CAL FIRE. And CAL FIRE staff is going to recommend that their board certify the element at a hearing later this month. And then last but not least is the health and environmental justice element. This element addresses community health, which is a longstanding priority for Chino, as well as new requirements in state law for environmental justice. It's structured around eight goals and it's got 89 supporting policies and 42 implementing actions. The key goals include promoting active, healthy lifestyles, strengthening and creating safe routes to schools, parks, and community centers, building a heat-resilient city, improving access to healthy food, focusing on clean air, water, and soil, wise use of resources, responsible waste management, and a healthy environment. Some of the key strategies in this element involve developing a healthy development checklist for new development that encourages the incorporation of strategies that promote active, healthy lifestyles and healthy developments, continuing to promote physical activity and identifying new amenities for parks such as parkour or fitness equipment that can encourage greater use in physical health, promoting activities for slow streets, safe driving and safe streets, adopting an urban forest management plan and an arterial street landscaping plan, incorporating design standards for heat resilience, and linking Chino to the regional trail network. So a key concept for environmental justice is disadvantaged communities. These are areas that have been identified by the state as having higher concentrations of low-income residents and higher exposure to pollution. The state has designated four census tracts in Chino as disadvantaged communities. And these are generally just north of downtown and north along Central Avenue but south of the 60 freeway. So the element needs to characterize conditions in these locations and to incorporate strategies to improve health and quality of life for the residents of those areas. What you can see here, it's a little small, but that chart on the left is comparing different health outcomes in Chino to San Bernardino County as a whole. And what this shows is actually, Chino on the whole, Chino residents have better health outcomes than San Bernardino County as a whole. So in particular, Chino residents have a longer life expectancy, lower rates of asthma, cardiovascular disease, obesity, diabetes, and physical inactivity. However, Chino residents overall do face greater exposure to air pollution and pesticides than in San Bernardino County as a whole. And in Chino, the residents of those disadvantaged communities have markedly worse health outcomes than residents of other areas. So that means in particular, higher rates of asthma and heart disease and lower rates of educational attainment. So overall, this element is structured to address the health priorities of Chino. And we did targeted outreach to the residents of the disadvantaged communities to understand what their priorities were. And this is a summary of survey results. You can see that overall, they were pretty satisfied with their access to fresh, healthy food. They were satisfied with air quality and water quality in their neighborhoods and with the availability of recreational spaces. But their number-one priority was really about roadway safety. They had concerns for roadway safety. And in particular, you can see that almost 40% of the respondents didn't agree with the statement that it's safe for children to cross the street or play outside. And so the element is really designed to speak to these priorities. And it includes an important focus on promoting safe access to schools, parks, and community centers. The element identifies areas of Chino that don't currently have, for example, bicycle routes linking neighborhoods to schools, parks, and community centers. And so it has a suite of programs and policies to prioritize the implementation of planned bicycle facilities in those areas. It also includes policy guidance for developing and implementing safe routes throughout the city, including promoting a safe-driving campaign, partnering with community groups to conduct annual walk audits of the neighborhoods to identify potential options for improvement, thinking about potentially creating a Safe Routes Advisory Council and incorporating Safe Routes planning into the next update of the Bicycle and Pedestrian Master Plan. Urban heat, summertime heat, is also an ongoing concern in Chino. As I mentioned, there's a key implementing action to adopt an urban forest management plan. The map on the left is showing tree canopy coverage. Generally tends to be more trees in the northern part of the city. But planting more trees will help to control summertime temperatures, create more livable neighborhoods. The map on the right is showing the areas where projected temperatures are expected to be hottest in 2045. These are typically areas with large expanses of concrete and buildings. And so you can see that's why the airport or the industrial areas, but also the shopping centers as well. So focusing on strategies to address those urban heat islands is also included in this plan. And so that might be different for different areas. So in the shopping centers, for example, in the northern part of the city, planting trees makes sense for a lot of reasons. It's an effective strategy. It's also aesthetically pleasing. But in the industrial areas, it doesn't necessarily make sense. It takes a long time for a tree to grow. You can have, with a white roof or with certain building materials, you can more effectively control the temperature. So there's different strategies for different locations. But overall, a comprehensive strategy to address summertime temperatures. And then finally, the last chapter is the implementation chapter. And a key aspect of this chapter is an implementation matrix. So it takes all of those 207 implementing actions and it organizes them into a matrix that prioritizes an implementation timeframe into near term, the next five years, midterm, the next 10 years, and long term, the next 20 years. For each action, there's a responsibility assigned to one or more city departments. And it's organized into categories. So plans, and so there's a suite of actions around plans. There's a suite of actions around regulations. Some actions involve financing strategies. So it's a comprehensive plan to implement the general plan over a number of years with priorities that consider, you know, available resources and staffing as well. But that's one thing that in particular, we'd like your comments on tonight. And so with that, I'll open it up for discussion. In particular, there's three questions on that last slide that we'd like your input on. If you could put up the slide again, it'd be great to refresh everyone's memory. So these were included in the staff report. But we'd like to know, do you have any particular questions about the content or the objectives of the goals, policies, and actions? Would you recommend any refinements to these policies or actions? And then, as I mentioned, is the implementation timeframe for actions that are shown in Chapter Eight appropriate? Or would you recommend any actions be completed sooner? Or would you recommend the actions be completed later than proposed? So those are the types of input that we'd like to hear from you all on. But I'm... But, um, I'm all ears if you have questions.
Thank you very much, Andrew. Council, any particular questions, comments? Mark?
So when we, uh, when we look at the, the mixed use overlay that we did on Euclid Avenue, I think we had a discussion that, uh, saying this early that a minimum of, or seventy-five thousand square feet was going to be the, the amount that we were going to set. I thought we, we discussed that we weren't set on that number yet. And the only, the reason I'm bringing it up is when we, we talk about that in an open meeting, it leads developers to believe that we've already set the, the minimum, the seventy-five thousand as, as what's their minimum that they need to, to provide. And, and that corridor specifically is, is designed for a sales tax revenue to help support the preserve, especially when it comes out to full build out. So if we say that the minimum they have to build is seventy-five thousand, we know developers are going to come in and, and want to build only seventy-five thousand. Well, we still haven't determined what the minimum should be. And we haven't, uh, I think Chris and I asked if we could have a, a site map to see what seventy-five thousand square feet would look like on that particular property or, or more. So that's the only caution that I, that I see is that we're saying that in an open meeting when that truly hasn't been something that the council has, has agreed upon. And I don't want the developer, the owner of that property to think that that's what the target is. So that, that's the only thing I, I want to question or at least caution us on doing that, especially here in an open meeting.
Yeah, I, we actually prepared some detailed slides. If you want to, I can show them now. We can, just so everyone understands what we're talking about here. And, um, can we put up the presentation again? There were some backup slides in there. Great, thank you. So what we're talking about is this Euclid and Bickmore site in the south of the city. It's where that employment mixed use, um, new designation would apply. This is the parcel that I mentioned. It's, uh, was originally planned for commercial development and as part of the preserve specific plan, but it's been vacant for twenty years. Um, and so this is a strategy to try and provide, um, retail on that, um, on that parcel. And so this map is actually included in the land use element. You can see, um, this parcel is quite difficult to develop. It's, um, impacted by, uh, primarily by flooding issues. You can see the, the hundred year flood plain in dark blue in the south. And also the yellow line is the, um, five hundred and sixty-six foot elevation, which is the high mark of the Prado Dam spillway. And so, uh, the US Army Corps and OC Flood, um, want to make sure that there's no development that happens below that five-six-six line because of the potential catastrophic damage that could happen, uh, that could happen in the event of, um, of, uh, of, uh, you know, the, the Prado Dam backing up. And so that, overall, this, the whole of the orange site is almost ninety acres in size. We've done some calculations here. But when you net out, uh, the area that's impacted by flooding, uh, by that Prado Dam spillway and, um, and then there's also some additional flow easements over the, over the parcel, which are shown in a slightly darker blue there. The remaining developable, but developable area is about, um, twenty-three point six acres. So it's pretty heavily impacted. In the southern portion of the site, um, we've talked with OC Flood and they're open to having it available for, um, uh, you know, public recreational purposes, so passive recreational purposes, maybe some trails, some interpretive signage, dog walking, that kind of thing, um, but no, you know, real development. And so when we go back to this slide, what we've tried to do here is, is show, um, for example, a footprint of where the retail could happen in that lighter, um, lighter color. And then the footprint for where the, um, the, uh, light industrial and manufacturing could happen. We've done some more calculations here to show. And so the, the designation is written to say, you can develop a hundred percent commercial on this property and that's fine. If you, if you want to develop light industrial uses, then you must provide at least seventy-five thousand square feet of retail. And where does that number come from? Well, seventy-five thousand square feet is about the amount of retail that exists on the Merge project in Eastvale that I mentioned, which has the same sort of configuration of retail on the street frontage and light industrial behind. So that's where our number came from. Our economist did a, did a calculation, right? Considering all the new development that's planned in Ontario Ranch, considering the connection, the Pine Avenue connector that would connect to seventy-one freeway and potentially bring more traffic, um, uh, you know, this way, potential patrons for retail at this location. Their estimate was that, uh, in view of all that development, the site could accommodate about a hundred and twenty-four thousand square feet of retail. So seventy-five thousand would be a minimum comparable to what's at the Merge in Eastvale. And, and that's just the floor. And so this is what seventy-five thousand square feet of retail would look like. You know, we've got a configuration of the, the, um, pink being the buildings plus the additional surface parking in front. This slide then shows what that a hundred and twenty-four thousand would look like. So more bigger buildings, more retail, but also more park, more surface parking. And then, uh, some examples. So what does seventy-five thousand, uh, square feet of retail look like? Well, here are some examples of, uh, from Chino. The Central Court Shopping Center on Philadelphia Street is about sixty thousand. So this would be bigger than that. There's another example, the Mountain Village Plaza on Mountain Avenue. That's about almost ninety thousand, so a little less than that, just to give you some ballpark figure for what seventy-five thousand would look like. And then the Chino Shopping Center on Central Avenue, that, well, that's ninety-four thousand, so a little bit bigger. And, uh, and then the new town, town center at the preserve is a hundred and forty thousand. So that would be, um, a little larger than the hundred and twenty-four thousand that the economist thinks is, is feasible at this location. So anyway, all of this, just for, for context, um, hope that's, hope that's sort of helpful to sort of set the stage. But this is the kind of thing that we welcome, you know, input from, um, the council and the commission on. This is the logic for having set the minimum amount of retail at seventy-five thousand. But it's an open question. Is that the right level to set it at? Should it be higher? And we'd welcome your input on that. This is, as, um, council member Lucio says, this is, this is a draft. It's, um, it's open for discussion. We can make amendments and, and bring forward those amendments in, in the hearing draft, um, later this summer.
Any other questions on that?
No, that's it.
In, in regards to the circulation, circulation map, specifically the truck routes, we had discussed at one time pulling the trucks off of Grand Avenue between Highway seventy-one and Pipeline. Yet I still see that on the map. We were going to divert that south of the location. There's entirely too much traffic in there. The congestion's horrible and they just tear up the streets in there. Where are we with that?
Thank you, Councilman Burton, for that question. In looking at that, we have commissioned a traffic study that is taking a look at that. That is overdue, back to you. Part of the reason is one of the tasks that are associated with that traffic study is, um, finalizing the traffic signal timing component. And so that took a lot longer than expected. But the early, uh, recommendation is that Grand needs to remain a truck route. It's a critical corridor. It's continuation with Edison Avenue providing that east-west connectivity through the city between, uh, Euclid and, and the seventy-one and even connectivity over to the fifteen ultimately. It really provides a vital, uh, commercial goods movement corridor for Chino, not only for our, our local industrial and manufacturing, commercial economy, uh, but for the region at large. Additionally, in looking at removing that as a truck route and what would happen to the rest of our network had we done that, what we expect to see is an, an over concentration of that commercial traffic along the Shaffer Corridor to the north, which would impact, uh, that traffic coming south, still trying to get access to seventy-one, as well as moving that truck traffic, uh, down Ramona and in Chino Hills Parkway. And so the alternatives to Grand, um, the, the study is going to show that the, the alternatives tend to provide a worse condition than just, uh, instead focusing on enhancing Grand to improve traffic throughput. So the study also looks at alternatives. One of the things that's being looked at as part of that is an improvement to the northbound on-ramp at the seventy-one at Grand. Because right now, uh, there's two lanes that are allowed on. Trucks don't know that and they can't physically make that turn. And so when they both try to do that, they stop all traffic while one goes and then the other. So one of the implementing, uh, ideas as an alternative is to focus on a project that addresses that and allows for dual right turn truck movements at that interchange to help increase that flow of traffic. Additionally, the signal timing improvements that I spoke of earlier are intended to, uh, maintain that flow of traffic along especially the seventy-one to Pipeline Corridor, uh, so that we keep traffic moving and, and really reduce our delays from, from stops. So, uh, I apologize, that study is well overdue, back to you guys for its consideration. But again, we wanted to get that signal timing component really nailed down, uh, before we brought it back. But ultimately, the answer to the question is we, we're not recommending that Grand be removed as a truck route.
Thanks, Dennis.
Chris, you have any questions or comments?
No, not right now.
Not right now? Mark, anything else? Kurt, anything else? Karen?
So as part, as part of the study for, um, bike and walking and trails and accessibility, is there, I know I've spoken to the city manager about it, but what is the part of the NEXA study that will determine how we get some of that stuff into development? And once we come up with the new plan for that as part of the implementation, how do we, like, how do we set that off in areas where we don't, where we haven't done it for so many years? Since there's no, you know, triggering point any longer with development, how do we bring it all together in the future?
Think, I mean, I think you're talking about funding and financing strategies for, for building these things, yeah.
Because, because, you know, had we built it a long time ago, it would be less, but now it's going to be really expensive for us to do that.
Right. I think, uh...
Because it's nice to talk about making us a more walkable and bikeable community, but how do we, how do we do it?
Right. I think, I mean, different, so there's different strategies for different areas. I certainly think, you know, in the, in the shopping centers, the centrally located shopping centers along Central, along Riverside, up in Philadelphia, we, the land use element includes incentives for the provision of, uh, you know, community benefits like this. And so the, the, the FAR limits is structured, for example, to, there's a base amount of FAR that you get. And if you want to go higher up the, up the permitted, um, amount, then you, uh, then a developer would need to provide some community, um, community benefits like, uh, for example, uh, the, um, having the, um, the channel, the, the bikeway along the flood control channel on north of the sixty, having that come into, uh, one of the shopping centers. We, we can structure, uh, identify that as a community benefit. And that would, um, that if a developer was, was to provide that connection, um, they would receive, you know, more development rights. And so that kind of, that can be a strategy for, um, for facilitating the provision of those improvements, um, in, in areas. I think there's, uh, you're talking about, you're talking about other areas. There need to be other considerations for, um, for other areas as well. I think some of the connections to the regional network can be funded through, um, through regional grants. Pursuing grants can be a way to, to connect, um, to the trail network in Chino, uh, in Chino Hills State Park, for example, or to connect to the south, to the San Ana River Trail. There, there would be, um, regional funding potentially available for, for building those connections.
I think, I think what I'm also asking is like, in addition to the, the connect, the connectivity that needs to be done on that, I think I would ask for like our staff as well as the police department. These walkable areas right now are really only being used by people who want to avoid detection or, you know, homeless people or, or different things. And we, we have several of these areas in the city that I think if we work with the state or other developers, perhaps it's time for us to like, look at those also for the rest of our community to access our shopping centers or other areas as well. It's, it's not a new idea. It's, I, it's just an idea that really hasn't been adopted in our county, right? And I think it would improve for, um, more safe passages of bicycles or pedestrians to get into some of these areas that they want to get into. And just my last comment, I already mentioned it to the city manager. If you, if you haven't really read the section of heat in this thing, it's actually pretty, pretty interesting and pretty alarming. And, um, it's making me think that we probably shouldn't construct another park or certain portions of the city any longer without a, a cooling element like the splash pad that we're doing down in the preserve. And it's also made me rethink, uh, the value of trees and some of the areas that we're choosing to put, um, artificial turf, you know, moving forward.
Dennis, did you have anything to add?
I was just going to add in, um, on the comment about, um, trails and circular, and certainly active transportation. Included, as Andrew mentioned, as a, a goal and a policy for this is to update our pedestrian, uh, bike and pedestrian master plan, which is coming up on almost ten years old now. And there's certainly been a lot of shifts in how we approach, uh, active transportation, um, citywide. And so, uh, what we're looking to do is seek out grant funding to help us take our plan, which is a really good base, but really, um, you know, inject kind of the new ideas. Some of the things that we've been, uh, kicking around, um, City Hall, for instance, is like a, a trail around the, the, um, California Institute for Men, uh, providing that connectivity between, um, the northern central Chino and the preserve and allowing that active transportation corridor to be an alternative to, uh, vehicle driving, as well as providing long, uh, recreational trails to help encourage healthy living. Along with enhancing our, our bike network and our sidewalk network to encourage people to not only, uh, get out of the vehicle for their local needs, but to do that for recreation. So really focus on that, uh, citywide. And so that'll be some of the goals that the staff is going to take on as, as this general plan gets adopted and we move forward with, uh, implementing these things. Which then set us up for being more competitive for grant funding to help implement these things that, uh, we find ourselves struggling with the, with the dollars to implement.
Omnitrans also in this next fiscal year is proposing to go back to a hundred percent service on their routes. And so hopefully we'll get some of the routes back that we lost.
Yeah. And that certainly ties into it too, the, the bus stops, the, the transit, making sure that that pedestrian bike connectivity corresponds with our transit needs as well.
And Dennis, as you know, it comes up, I mean, it, um, in the community, we have Ramona Avenue, it comes up all the time. And, um, I just, you know, people, people talk about it and it would be nice. I'm, I'm not a fan of some of those, um, some of those grants, like if you see where they put up like the cones or whatever, that, that style. I don't even know if we would be eligible for that type of, like, like grant funding. But certainly some of the work that you and your team have done with some of the different class bike lanes in town, they're being used. If you're riding around and we're constructing and putting, putting those lanes in throughout town, people are using them all over town. And it's nice to see, so thank you.
Absolutely.
You know, one comment also, um, on page seven of the staff report. I was really glad to see that we have finally addressed the fact that we're not going to widen some of the streets that can't be widened. That's always been kind of a, a stickler. So I'm glad to see that we're finally acknowledging we're not going to tear up D E S Hall and, you know, we're not going to go to six lanes on Central because we can't. So thank you for doing that.
Mayor, I agree with that too. Uh, you, and when you look at that state, that sometimes these studies, like you look at it like, oh, I don't, I don't know that I agree with that. But when I sit on the streets that they talk about, I don't feel an unnecessary delay unless there's something happening on the sixty freeway. And I don't feel like most of our residents do either in those streets.
Exactly. Jimmy, would you like to query your planning commission?
Okay, um, thank you. Uh, on the planning commission, has any, have any comments or questions? Yes, vice chair.
I noticed that you mentioned using fire resistant building supplies when constructing new homes, especially down in the preserve since a lot of our areas now under fire, um, zones. Did we, or are any of our shopping centers, um, utilizing solar panels? I, it just took me back. I, this weekend I was noticing that the Chino Hills Shops is installing solar panels on all of their shopping center. And it just took me back to a couple of Thanksgivings where half of the preserve lost power the entire day. And now that we have, um, the shopping center, I was just like, oh my gosh, what happens if we lose power? And we're out the whole day, like Stater Brothers would lose all their cold items. So do we utilize solar panels anywhere?
I, I'm not sure about the, the shopping center in particular, but what I would say, and maybe Mike can speak to that. But what I would say is in, um, the hazard, safety and noise element, we have a whole goal about building community resilience. And some of it's around resilient infrastructure. And so there's policies about, uh, equipping, um, city facilities with, with back, uh, with backup power in that kind of situation. Or helping, um, homeowners to, you know, to have batteries, uh, batteries installed for, for that kind of thing. So there is a policy framework around resilient infrastructure, um, community wide. And I don't know, Mike, if you can speak to whether there's solar panels. And, I don't know, Mike, if you can speak to whether there's solar panels.
In my recollection, there's a few, you know, always, there always could be more. And like, a good example of where none of the shopping centers so much is the Kaiser Building has their parking, their shade structures, they have their, you know, so we're always encouraging more of that. We are going to look at in our code update that we're going to do to find ways to allow for that, that to be more easily developed, those kind of carports that can have solar panels, because the way the code's written now makes a little more of a hindrance. So, I think we're trying to find ways to improve that, so hopefully, yes, we hope to get more and more, and incentivize that as much as we can.
I was going to say, maybe we consider incentives for, you know, builders that would utilize solar.
And the state's really made the process, we have to, it's very streamlined, so it's the, there's, it's pretty easy to get through, you know, the process to get those, so hopefully they can get more of that done.
Thank you.
Jimmy, hang on one second. Um, Michael.
Yes.
Years ago, Corey Briggs took us to court over solar panels on big manufacturing buildings and stuff. Is he still active in doing that?
Not, not that I'm aware of. We haven't heard from him in quite a while, fortunately.
Interesting, because I'm wondering if, if he would attack shopping centers nowadays?
Yeah, I'm not aware. I think, I think because the state law has sort of made it very easy and, and kind of requires that you, and even making places EV ready, you know, and those kinds of things, and the state laws have really kind of loosened that up quite a bit. And, kind of, I wouldn't say necessarily, I do believe like, housing now, there's requirements to put on new housing. I think that may be coming more for commercial industrial buildings as well in the future.
Okay, thanks.
I think that's a good, good point, Mayor. The laws have changed so much that those kind of challenges would be pretty difficult to mount these days.
That's good. I'm sure the person made a lot of money over the years.
Thank you for, thank you, Mayor. Vice chair, you have one more question?
One more question in regards to the widening of streets. El Prado and Kimball, is that off, is that off of the list now?
Yeah.
I noticed it's a city truck route, so I was just curious.
So, the, there, there is a project on the books to take a look at improving the intersection of El Prado and Kimball and realigning that. It's, it's not so much a road widening project as it is an intersection improvement project. So, there are, through the general plan, ideas of, like the mayor suggested, things like Riverside being six lanes. When we looked at the new modeling, the new way we approach circulation, it's no longer needed for what we intend to do with the city. So, for those reasons, those, those right of way requirements are being kind of re-interpreted and either repurposing what we were, what we've already received from, from development, from right of way acquisition, to maybe wider parkways for more shade trees, trails, sidewalks, more amenities that are more geared towards maybe the adjacent property uses to that concern. But specifically for, for that project, that's a CIP project that would be, that's being looked at and, and, you know, taking a look at the design, and it requires right of way from the state, from the CIM property. So, it's, it's taking a look at all that and seeing how best to move that forward.
I, I think to, to also, like, my perspective on that comment too, Lisa, is like, the, the right of way that would take us in some of those areas from landowners is almost, would almost be impossible for us to attain. But I do think, you know, we've, we've had some issues with CIM as of recent. I do think there's a possibility we could get that right of way to at least widen that intersection. It's just going to take some getting to the table with the state, and most of the getting to the table that we, with the state that we've had right now have been over different issues, regretfully, so.
Okay, I just think it's a, I avoid that section, you know, three PM to five thirty PM, I won't even go down there because we, you know, get backed up on Los Opoque Canyon Central and then coming into the preserve. And it is a major artery coming into the neighborhood, you know, you're either coming that way or you're coming off of Pine, so I'd hope it was something that we could at least look at, just the flow, even if we're not widening in it, just the flow of it somehow. I, I'd like us to continue to look into that, thank you.
And I thought that was something that we were looking at because we have two major projects that are going in. I believe the state has surplus some land there, there's going to be some large industrial warehouses that are going in into the surplus land, and then on top of that, there's some other project that's going to be going in as well that's north of that, or, I'm sorry, south of that, that I thought was going to also increase the truck traffic. That was one of the reasons we were looking at that intersection.
Yes, as well as finally getting Pine Avenue built to seventy-one, that's a very strong priority that the staff is working on completing, because that connection to seventy-one changes the whole traffic patterns in that whole area. And so, that'll hopefully help reduce some of the stress off of that intersection specifically. But all those things all at once, the, the, the right of way that you, you talked about, that, that's crucial to getting an operational improvement, a capital improvement to do that. But certainly, looking at the, the traffic flow issues with what we have today, we'll certainly take a look at.
I, I think if we could get the right of way, that we could improve the operation of that intersection significantly. But to Dennis's point, the biggest issue there is the, the connectivity to Pine Avenue.
Thank you, Lisa. Any more questions? Steve, you have a question?
No more questions, just, you've already answered hundreds of my questions already. After, you know, three years and many, many meetings for G-PAC, it was a wonderful experience. It was nice to go through it, very educational, and it's nice to see it all put together in this nice format like this, where we just would do like, a giant expanded chunk, and then you shrink it down to the nice nitty gritty and everything. It's, you guys did a wonderful job and wonderful presentation, and I just want to say, as a member of the G-PAC, it was fun to do and, and definitely very educational. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Commissioner Serneros.
Thank you, Chairperson. Question in regards to upcoming technology. In regards to the forecasted increase in employment, does that take into consideration the future use of robotics and 3D printing in manufacturing?
I think it does, but I think, so the, the employment projections that we're talking about are, are done at a regional level. So, each, you know, city in, in the SCAG region does their own forecasting, you know, they look at available land, they look at trends, and they, and they make their projections, and then the SCAG for the wider region rolls them up. So, I would say they're, they're, they're pretty high level analysis. I don't know if they get to the granularity of that, but, but when I'm talking about opportunities to redevelopment, to redevelop within those industrial areas, I think that 3D printing and, and that kind of new technology is opening up more options, they're going to facilitate redevelopment within the, within those areas with new businesses. And, and so, we have policies in, in the land use element about the, providing for flexible spaces that can accommodate a different type, different types of businesses over time. So, I think that sort of gets at what you're, what you're talking about.
Yes, thank you, and as we are impacted by emerging technology over the next twenty years, it will impact our manufacturing, our need for industrial, et cetera. And so, I think as we look at our current insight to twenty forty-five general plan, we've got to take into consideration zoning for those types of uses and how that could change with the implementation of those resources that are going to streamline the warehousing, make it more efficient, and potentially decrease the employment needed and the space in, in size of warehouses and the logistics centers that are needed in the city and our area as a whole. Additionally, taking that into consideration, we have to, I was happy to see that the general plan mentioned autonomous vehicles, ride hailing services, and the intelligent transportation systems, because that will become more competitive for transit centers, as people can use Uber, et cetera, Lyft, to be able to take a ride. And some cities are actually implementing that into their transit centers, looking towards the future, partnering with Lyft, et cetera, with the ability to actually acquire income, revenues off of those services in a partnership with the city, as they, in the future, could potentially compete with the transit centers, which could change how rides for public that do not use their own vehicles take place in the future. And so, I was happy to see that. And then additional question, in regards to the health and environmental quality for our disadvantaged communities, which we have in the city of Chino, and you, you outlined them there on the presentation. Do we have an aspect to the new general plan, and perhaps it already exists, and I'm just not familiar with it, to incentivize healthy restaurants and grocery stores in those areas through zoning incentives, through tax incentives, et cetera? Is that part, is that part of the twenty forty-five general plan?
I think there's broader policies around, around healthy eating and access to healthy food. I don't know that there's particular incentives, but that's the kind of, you know, suggestion that we're looking for at this meeting, and so that's something that we can look at incorporating for the hearing draft.
Yeah, I think that would be very beneficial to those areas of our city and throughout our city as a whole. And that does conclude my comments and questions, and I appreciate the, the information, thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. Any more questions on the other end? Newbies? No? We do, we do have, we have, we have some sphere of influence in here also. This is your opportunity to speak about it. Okay. Anybody else here? Okay, I have a couple questions. We, we talked about it earlier about the opportunity for the property right there off of Euclid and Bigmore. If we could put that slide up, just add a quick question on, on that one, if possible. You were talking about seventy-five thousand to roughly a hundred twenty-five thousand. Now, is that all commercial or industrial also?
No, that would be only the commercial retail, so just restaurants, just retail. And the, the range that we're talking about, so as I say, The Economist did sort of a back of the envelope study, like, thinking about all that development that's planted Ontario Ranch, thinking about, you know, all the traffic that could be generated by the Pine Avenue connector that after work would be passing right in front of those, you know, those restaurants and businesses. So, how much could you capture there? About a hundred twenty-four thousand.
That's exactly what I was thinking right there, yeah.
Yeah, so about a hundred twenty-four thousand. And then, if that's the, the reasonable, you know, range that we can hope to attract, well, the floor is set at seventy-five thousand, and that's comparable to what exists at the, at the merge. So, that's where that range is coming from. But again, you know, there, that's point for discussion.
Yeah, I think it's important to note that the, we should probably put a good number in the general plan, because it is kind of the guiding document that kind of establishes that base floor. But, the important part to understand is that the general plan we're going to be doing is creating that land use, and then we'll come back later at the end of the year with the whole zoning code for those uses that'll be folded into the preserve specific plan, that would outline how you, how you do this, the process of doing that, and saying, you must build, the retail has to be built. If you're going to have, we're not going to allow the industrial to be built standalone first, the retail has to come first, then the industrial could also be built, if you decide that that's what you want to do there. But again, that, those will be the very specific height limits and setbacks, and all that will be folded into that document at a later date. This is just sort of kind of outlining what could happen there, what we think, but I think it's important to have that, that base number in there, so we don't have, it doesn't compete with each other, but the seventy-five thousand is definitely the minimum we think should happen. Well, like, you reiterated the word capture. That's like, the perfect word to use. You just want to capture sales tax for our residents, obviously, east of Ontario. Obviously, for, to facilitate that, we need Euclid and we need Pine to be fully connected. What is the update on getting Pine connected by twenty forty-five? You could just stand there the whole time, you let that, just sit down. Thank you.
So, that is an excellent question, because we've been at it for a while and, and we have very little to show for it. So, the Public Works Department recently re-released our RFP for new design services. As the Council on Planning Commission may or may not be aware, staff in looking at the progress we've had to Pine Avenue thus far, and, and seeing where we're at and where we're going, realized that we really need to pivot the project from more of a dirt infill type project to really a bridge structure, which was a complete change in strategy from where we were heading for the last almost fifteen years, if not longer. And so, with that, it required really pivoting the project, which required us to go back out to bid for a whole new design and a whole new set of plans for, and a whole new environmental document to address a lot of the concerns that we were seeing, not only from our neighbors to the west of Chino Hills, but also from the Army Corps and Orange County flood, and to make sure that we can actually deliver this project as we've promised. So, that is underway right now. I think current, the, the current estimates estimate that the design and environmental, as currently planned, will take us about two, two and a half years, and then we believe it'll be about an eighteen to twenty-four month build project to construct. So, roughly in the magnitude of five years, we'll say five to seven years to, to give me some cushion there, give us some cushion to make sure we can deliver that project. But that's the current timeline for the Pine Avenue connector.
Yeah, it's very important, obviously, that's something we've been talking about for years, obviously decades possibly. Mayor, if I could elaborate on how long that's been discussed for?
Forever.
Many years. Obviously, there's hurdles. You want it, you get it, but you have to pay for it, you need environmental studies, so many things. That's an opportunity there, and obviously, I think we have spoken, it's in the plans here, there's another great opportunity off of Chino Hills Parkway, and I think it's Ramona for mixed use. So, those are two great opportunities that need to be seized. Another thing that we briefly talked about was the Stark Detention Center. By the numbers, I'm not sure how many hundreds of acres are available there. What would it be roughly?
Yeah, I think that's a little bit up in the air. It's a, it's a focus of discussions with the state. There's the Stark property itself, but there's also potential surplus property immediately to the north, just south of College Park. And so, how that area would be defined is, is, we don't know yet. I think it, there's ongoing discussions between the city and the state. That area would be partially impacted by the run, like, by the airport safety zones, and so, you know, in the southern port of, part of the site, you could have the working farm there, but it would need to be designed so that, you know, the areas, like, the, like the farm area would be in the southern portion that's more impacted by the runway safety zones. So, establishing where those safety zones are and, and working with the, with the state to determine what's the, the parameters of the parcel. But we are looking at, what is it, sixty acres? Somewhere in that, in that vicinity?
So, okay. So, if this were to go through and it, and it worked out, we, we'd get, would we make a specific plan for that area?
So, that is another thing that would be decided in conversations with the state, but it's likely that the state would require something like a specific plan that explains what the city intends to, you know, to do with the land, to permit with the land, before they would, as part of those negotiations, they want to see what they're signing up for. And so, one vehicle to do that would be to prepare a specific plan, to demonstrate to the state what the plan is, and then on that basis.
Perfect, thank you very much. Any more questions up here? Nope. Mayor, do we need to open up for the public?
As soon as we're finished.
Okay, sorry. Trying to jump the gun here.
Would you have Jackie give a little bit of an overview on Stark?
Jackie, are you available to provide an update on where we're at with Stark?
Thank you, Mayor. Andrew, that was a really good explanation. We did open up a RFP process for some project management on the Stark property, so that will be coming to a future council meeting to, to bring on a firm to help us move that project forward. We are, as Andrew said, working with the state. There will be a specific master plan type of process that's part of all of this. One of the big things that, that, that helps facilitate is to determine the types of uses that are going to be out there, so there'll be public outreach. We'll talk, we've talked a lot about, about preserving agricultural uses by having some sort of farm to table. We've talked about commercial uses, there could also be hospitality. Part of the, the RFP process will be looking at what you call verticals, or different types of uses out there, what's viable, what does the public want to see. So, there'll be a, a large process that'll be years in the making, and many of the folks at these tables here will be help facilitating that process along with the public to determine what is the future of Euclid look like, what is the future of that property look like. And so, we're excited about, about that and what that means for the future of our city.
We have about four years to put together a plan in order for the state to determine how much they want to charge for the land. Correct.
But it's a, it's a hundred and twenty acres with a potential going up to two hundred.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, it's quite a, quite a large.
The uses will help determine the, the, the value of the land. So, if it's a public use, that's a certain amount. If it is a commercial use, that's another amount. If there's housing, that's another amount. And so, then that will help us in the conversations with the state on what the value of that land is.
What I have here, I know nobody wants to talk about it, but incentives, would they give us more incentive to build more residential? Is that possibly something they would look at?
In our conversations with the state, when incentive isn't necessarily the right word, I hear what you're, what you're getting at.
You know what I mean.
Yeah, the, the state is very likely not going to give us any leeway. This is going to be something that we're going to have to pay for somehow, some way, so that will be also as part of this whole RFP process. Once that gets awarded, we'll be looking at what some of our, our options for funding some of these projects, what does that look like? And so, all of that will be part, there's a whole section that's looking at the financial feasibility of some of these things. So, we could want all these great, wonderful, massive things, but somebody at the end of the day is going to have to pay for those things. We know that the, the state, as all of you are well aware, the state has their housing mandates and requirements that they're interested in. So, what the mix is going to look like and how much that's going to cost based on those uses and those mixes, that's what we're going to be working on together with the public in the future.
Thank you, Jackie. Thank you, Jackie.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, go ahead.
One thing we didn't talk about was gaining the control of Euclid Avenue. Maybe you want to elaborate on maybe the possibility or help maybe speed up some things going on with development?
Yeah, I think Dennis will, no.
I apologize. This is just something I thought about when Jackie was speaking. I apologize.
I should have just stood next to Andrew the whole time. No worries. So Euclid relinquishment. So we, we actually just had a really good conversation with Caltrans this week. The process continues. The goal is if everything's good and the agreement looks good, which we're currently in the final stages of, of getting both the state and the city to an agreement on, if that agreement looks good and, and we're ready to take that forward, then the Caltrans goal is to relinquish Euclid to the city by the end of this fiscal year. So by June of 2026.
Ontario took, has, has full control now, correct? Or is it Upland, I forget?
Both. So Upland was first, Ontario has full control of theirs. We are the last.
So we pretty much complete the?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Karen. You know, Jimmy, I think you bring up a, some, some very important points there. You're talking about Pine, you're talking about Euclid, we're talking about Stark. Actually, there's been a lot of discussion with your council in public meetings and infrastructure about how important getting the Stark facility is to us as a community. If we don't, if we don't acquire that, which we are moving forward acquiring, and the state has agreed to let us, if you're not paying attention to what's happening with housing, like particularly what just happened with the bills 131, 131, you know, absolving CEQA, absolving different standards, the state's going to do with that property what they want to do, they're going to sell it off and give people what they call the buy right or ministerial right to develop that in a different way. That's why this council is so aggressively pursuing this piece of property because of how big it is and how not just important it is to the, you know, this section of our community, how we want to see it develop. But I think there's also opportunity for us in getting Euclid Avenue and the development that's going to occur in there to help us also continue to advance some of these major transportation projects through development. So using grants, development, and what's going to happen down there is going to be a big part of how the rest of that section of our community develops and how it looks in the future. So these are all very important projects that our staff knows about. The Infrastructure Committee has had Pine Avenue come back to us on several occasions, and we are in full support of them going back and changing the strategy that they have used. Because we also believe that the change in strategy will help us to advance those projects, particularly Pine, through the Army Corps of Engineers more quickly. So this is all part of a larger strategy that your council is talking about, and we see how that can all come together. But there's a, there's a lot of moving parts in this, a lot of plays, but we, we've got to make it happen. You know, getting Stark is the major part of it, getting those other things, and then we can hopefully help get that, that transportation also funded through all those things. So it's, it's a larger strategy and a good one. I believe, I believe it's all going to come together the right way for us. Thank you, Mayor.
And to piggyback off of what Karen said, the other option, if we don't secure the Stark property, the other thing that the state will more than likely do is what they've already done throughout all those properties there that they have surplus, is just give it back out to industrial development. So then instead of potentially residential, commercial, some sort of, you know, area where people want to come as a regional draw, we could very well look at many, many, many large industrial buildings there, which just impact Euclid Avenue even more. So it's important for us as council to make sure that we make it our number one priority to move forward and try to acquire that land and then develop something that we think and we believe that the community would rather have there as opposed to what would be the easiest thing for the state to do.
Chris, you had something.
So changing the topic a little bit, you, you touched on this point of the, the alleyways and, you know, exploring creative park strategies and turning these alleyways into parks, you know, potential park space. My question to that is, and from your experience, what kind of challenges have you heard from, especially our first responders, public safety, who do utilize those in, you know, emergency situations?
Yeah, that's a good question. So particularly, we've been looking at Riverside Avenue just east of, of Central because in that location, there's a number of alleyways, right, one after the other. That's also an area where there's a high rate of bicycle and pedestrian collisions. Part of that has to do with so many cars making so many turns in, in and out of alleyways creates more opportunities for conclusions, collisions, especially with the, the high school right there, you know, maybe kids back and forth. And so that seems like a good area, not to close off all of the alleyways, but maybe pick one, maybe two in, in that location. And just, the, the rest of the alleyway would still remain functional, right, for services, for, for local residents. It's just closing off the access point as it comes onto Riverside. So it, you're doing a couple of things. You're reducing the number of turning cars, hopefully improving safety, but also creating more park and gathering space. And so that, that's an area where we've looked at it in particular because of the, the rate of collisions, because of the need for park spaces in the northern part of the city, because of the focus of the Boulevard mixed use. And so when, when you think about it in that way, I don't think there's a concern of, you know, in terms of fire access or, or police safety, especially, I think, if you're putting more, more activity around those areas, you're actually putting eyes on the street and, and, you know, more people watching and so potentially reducing the, the potential for crime. So that's an area where I can speak to. If it was going to be applied in other parts of the city, we'd need to look at, or, you know, city staff would need to look at in the same way and understand the context and what the implications are.
Awesome, thank you. And second question is, under the health and environmental quality, just, you know, thinking of just, you know, the continuing rising cost of groceries and whatnot, and, you know, this, this goal of healthy food access. I know there are cities out there who have some sort of focus or goal on self-sustainability type gardens and I, and all the general plans you've worked on, is that something you've included in some of those general plans or?
Yeah, definitely. I mean, every community is different, so everyone has a different focus. But up in the Sacramento area, I worked on the Sacramento general plan, they have a lot of fruiting trees in public parks, which, you know, can provide a, a source of fresh food for, for people. So that was a particular focus in Sacramento, in, in Davis, for example. But we haven't tried to include a, like a master gardener program and some, some other things to, to facilitate and encourage people to grow their own food. It certainly works with the, the theme of, of Chino's agricultural heritage as well and with the healthy Chino, so it kind of marries those concepts.
Thank you.
Andrew, I have a question. You use a term in the staff report and you put it in quotes, complete streets. What are complete streets?
Yes. So complete streets are designed with all roadway users in mind, so not just drivers, but also pedestrians, bicyclists, transit users. And so they, the idea is that one street doesn't need to serve all users, but certain streets should be designed for, for different, for different modes. And so your, your bicycle and pedestrian master plan, for example, does a, a good job of locating the bicycle routes generally on parallel streets, so not putting the bikes right on the, on the streets with the fastest moving traffic with the trucks where the, where there's a greater potential for collision, but rather putting them on parallel streets with slower traffic that's more comfortable for, for cyclists. So that's a complete streets concept. It's thinking about, what it means really is thinking about the streets as places for all roadway users, not just drivers. And so, you know, different, different contexts for different users.
Okay, thank you. And then a while ago, several years ago, there was a study that was done on, instead of using black pavement, either white or gray to cut down on the heat element. I don't know if our staff has looked into that or not, but I'm just curious if that's any part of the plan at all.
So City of LA actually tried that. They, they installed reflective pavement and they had to abort because what happens is the white pavement actually reflects the heat, and so it made things hotter. So a bit, a little bit counterintuitive, but white, you know, that white roofs, for example, reflect the material, that's a really good strategy for an industrial area or the airport, for example, because it's, I mean, white paint is cheap and it's effective right away. Whereas planting a tree might take ten years for the, for the tree to get, you know, to full canopy and, and really provide the maximum benefit. In an industrial area, something like that, it's called high albedo treatment. Yeah.
Good evening, council and members of the planning commission. Yes, I've looked into, there's also, they call it a gray pavement, there's also white pavement. So in essence, what that is, you have a conventional pavement, pavement, structural pavement, but on top of it, you actually add paint. And the paint, unfortunately, it doesn't come cheap. And another challenge you have with especially white paint is if you have skid marks and things, it looks dirty. So then people don't like that, and then it requires a lot of repainting. So yes, it does come with some benefits with environment, but it also comes with other challenges, and that's additional cost of maintenance and additional cost of paint in general.
I was just wondering because I had, had read the initial study where they were going to do it to see if it cut down on heat, but I never went to follow.
It does. I think they, they estimated it cuts down anywhere between three to seven degrees and depending on like how much heat and shade they have, but it comes with its own challenges. And also another challenge they have is when you apply paint, it reduces friction for cars to stop. So there could be some issues with more car skidding during rain events.
Okay, thanks. Hi, Jim.
Yes.
What the, the element tries to do though is pick.
Can pull that back, I'm sure.
Pick heat strategies for different contexts, right? And so as I was, I was saying, in the neighborhoods, around the, the shopping centers, planting trees just makes a lot of sense for, because they have so many co-benefits, not just for heat, but also for the look and the feel of the place. So whereas in the industrial areas, maybe different strategies are appropriate. And so the, the general plan is applying high level guidance, you know, to sort of recognize that different areas are going to need different strategies, and that'll be implemented through the various programs and, and, and plans that staff puts together in the course of implementing the general plan.
Okay, thank you. Any more council comments or questions? Commission comments or questions? Then I'd like to open up to the public. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to ask any questions or have comments on our workshop this evening?
Hi, my name is Bob Nag, resident here, and we've met before. Two, two concerns, the land use, the density. I'm hoping that in the future, we won't end up with fifty-two houses per acre. I think that's too much. I think the far calculations, the poor area ratio should include all development on the, on the site. If you cut it in half, one goes up, they both go up. And it's, creates too much. So that's my one issue on that. Hopefully, we won't see anything like the Orbitz project in the future. The next issue, and it's off of that, is transportation and roadway traffic. One thing I would like to see, a lot of cities you go to, they have a designated blinking left-hand turn yellow. That creates, instead of stopping and waiting for a, a turn signal to come, and then when you get your turn signal, people got to stop the other way. Every time I go down Edison and need to make a left-hand turn, I can be sitting there a couple minutes, then when I finally get to go, because there hasn't been a car for that whole time, and a truck comes and now they need to stop because I'm making a left-hand turn. That ought to be included in the transportation project.
I can assure you, Dennis Rhalz has heard me nag about that for quite some time, so I believe that we are phasing that in.
Okay.
There are, like Montclair has some really, Montclair and Pomona in particular have really good systems that they use where you're not sitting there.
No, I, I.
I agree with you, Bob.
Okay, thank you. That's, I'm looking forward to the Housing Committee meeting. I, I have a lot of comments on that, but I won't put them out tonight. Thank you.
Thank you for being here this evening. Anyone else in the audience have any comments? Okay, if not, then we will adjourn our next regular meeting to Tuesday, July 15th at six with closed session starting no earlier than four. And Jimmy, if you would like to adjourn the planning commission?
Yes, we adjourn. We're going to have a meeting next week, and that's going to be the day after your meeting on Wednesday, I believe, the sixteenth.
Yes, at the same.
And I guess, Mayor, I think we are adjourned?
Yes, we are adjourned.
Until Tuesday? Thank you very much. Thank you, everybody. Thank you, everybody.